The Mississaugas of the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, and the Wendat. We also recognize the enduring presence of all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples. Lawrence Park Collegiate Institute was built on Treaty 13 lands of the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, negotiated in 1805. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet here, and we honor the generations of Indigenous peoples currently caring for the land and for having taken care of the land since time immemorial. As we are working to heal our relationship, we want to better understand Indigenous perspectives and relationships with the environment. We are committed to unlearning the ideologies of colonialism and to engage in meaningful actions towards reconciliation. And that's it. Have a seat. Thank you so much. So I do also recognize that there are a number of LP alumni, and so thank you so much for coming. And yes, so just so you know, we just endured a project which converted the heating system here from steam to water. So today will, for those alumni who burnt themselves regularly on the rads, today will be one of some of the last days that you can actually burn yourself on a radiator here at Lawrence Park Collegiate because we're getting so modern. And so there you go. But anyway, I'm here. I'm thrilled to be here to celebrate an exciting new partnership between the Scottish Rugby Club and Lawrence Park Collegiate. This partnership goes beyond the installation of a new turf, which is already obviously a game changer, not just for rugby, but for all the sports that we play on the turf, and not even just for Lawrence Park Collegiate, but for our feeder school like Glenview, for example, and other schools in the area that will plausibly taking advantage of a new field. The new turf will provide our athletes a state-of-the-art facility, but even more importantly, the Scottish Rugby Club is stepping up as a true community partner, and this is a great example of it. Support for rugby and leadership programming will give our students the chance to learn both on and off the field, developing skills like teamwork, resilience, and determination that will serve them throughout their lives. This collaboration speaks to the power of community, where a shared passion for sport can inspire young people to grow as both athletes and leaders. I do really want to thank the Scottish Rugby Club for believing in our students and our building, and something that will benefit for generations to come. So here's to a bright future for rugby at LPCI, and to the incredible opportunities this partnership will bring. So thank you so much, and again, welcome to Lawrence Park.
Perfect. So yeah, we'll just, so we'll start the presentation now. We are the Toronto Scottish Rugby Club. We are going to keep this meeting or presentation quite short so that we can get to the juicy part, which is the Q and A. The Q and A is going to run as a very porous collaborative conversation here. So we may get a question from the audience that the Fields Committee actually doesn't know the answer to, but someone in the audience might. So we encourage people to kind of say, hey, I got this one. And then we can kind of share information altogether. Land acknowledgement has been done. Thank you very much, Principal Greece. Quick disclaimer, as part of our deal or proposal with the TDSB, we must do a formal community consultation meeting. That meeting will be led by the school board. That meeting is not what's happening tonight. What's happening tonight is a meeting of the Scottish informally updating us with the school what we're proposing. Once it's approved, or once the TDSB tells us, there's actually going to be a formal meeting that they're leading. So I just wanted to make that clear, that today is not a formal meeting. It's just us kind of catching up on all the work that the Fields Committee has been doing. Great. So we're gonna, this is more for the benefit of people who don't know our rugby club, and we're just gonna go through this really quickly. So latest news, we had a fantastic season. As always, we like to thank our sponsors, the Duke of Kent, Globe and Mail, Go Away, Dawn. And we've had a ton of events this summer. We've been raising money. We've been giving back to the community through coaching, juniors, and also outreach programs throughout the winter. So we are a very involved rugby club, and I think today is a great demonstration of that. Summer socials, you guys know it. Recruitment, I'd be remiss. Athena has done an amazing job this year, and we'll guess, running social, running social media, and doing recruitment. So if anyone by the end of this presentation is like, wow, the Toronto Scottish, I have to be part of them, we will certainly make sure you get our Instagram handles, our website, and our charitable donation page, which I think is the next slide. We encourage you to give to us because we are always reinvesting back into our players and back into our communities. I have to speak very quickly about our feeder programs. Barb DiNardo sends her regrets, but I know she's certainly meant to be here tonight to talk about Toronto City and also turf. Both of these are our youth feeder programs that combined have over, I think, almost 400 kids between the two programs. And we have a very specific youth carve-out for field time in our Lawrence Park proposal. And we're just going to be giving them the time to run their programs on Wednesdays and on Saturday mornings. So there's a lot to be said about our youth programs, and if there's some questions later on, we can talk more about it. Scottish Day and the long goodbye at Fletcher's. I think most of the people here were at this amazing event that we had at Fletcher's. Fletcher's Fields, we're at the end of our three-year leaseback. Jerry can talk more about it later this evening. But about where is our new home and where do we go next has been at the top of our Fields Committee mind for at least since 2019. So we hope we're very close to having an answer for you this year. Oh, can we just go back one? I just wanted to very quickly note. So I know Principal Greece was asking about what our stands look like at Fletcher's. This is, I'm going to call this a sidecar, part of the sidecar deal, but one of the things we're hoping to do is actually donate or repurpose some of the fields from Fletcher's here at Lawrence Park. They're kind of huge. They might not fit, but City of Markham probably doesn't need them as much as we do. So we're going to try to get them here as part of the field renovation. And that was Jerry's idea. Okay. Doug, do you want to jump in?
When I joined the club, I was practicing at Sunnybrook, and I asked where the clubhouse was, and everyone pointed north. And I thought they meant the pavilion at Sunnybrook Park. They meant Fletcher's Field in Markham. It meant we really didn't have a place. We didn't, we didn't have a location where our players lived, trained, worked, went to school, had their families. Everything that happened competitively was far away. And even Sunnybrook wasn't really accessible to where the club members lived. So it was always a logical outcome that when Fletcher's was gone, we would relocate somewhere close to where we all are anyway. And the crossroads seemed to be Young and Eglinton as the center point. And we started searching in that realm. So returning to Midtown makes a ton of sense. I don't think a lot of people here appreciate, unless they play junior rugby, what it was like on a Wednesday night in a traffic jam trying to get to Fletcher's Field before sunset so you could actually play the game. We had this asset. We couldn't ever train at it. And we actually had to subsidize it for many years. So it became more and more critical as Fletcher's aged and the city expanded that we returned to our Midtown roots. And it's really, really important. Even I, you know, a latecomer to the Toronto Scottish, feel sentimental cycling up here. And it just feels like home. Shall I continue? Okay, I'm reading off the screen, same as you. This club was formed in 53. Fletcher's Field was developed in Jerry 73? Oh, 66. Okay. So originally, this club was playing like a lot of other rugby clubs and a lot of other city parks. And as the city grew and there was more demand in those parks, it became harder and harder to get times. And the club had to find its solution back then, and it was a pretty excellent solution. And now we have to find a solution again. Well, yes, the club was a pioneer of women's rugby and produced many, many international caliber athletes relative to the size of the club. And in the years I joined, women's rugby was really strong already, and men's rugby stunk. And it was a great source of pride to our longtime sponsor, Philip Crowley, to be behind the women's program and to be breaking new ground. And if anybody watched the Paris Olympics, they probably reveled in the women's sevens, surprise run to the gold final. And the Toronto Scottish, I have always been learning more from the women's players than the men could ever teach them. So in 2019, we foresaw the time when we were going to have to find a way with our meager resources to find a new permanent place in the city. And the challenge from the board of the club was, if you had just access to some of the proceeds of the sales of Fletcher's, could you establish a new home field in Toronto? And the answer obviously was no, because any piece of ground the size of a rugby field in downtown Toronto would cost $20 million. But we went around and checked all of the possible sites, partners, deal structures, and at the end of it came up with this idea. You can go back to that timeline. Those diagonal things you can't read are years, or sorry, months. And you can see all the different things that we tried with all the different property owners and possible partners leading up to this. And it finally occurred that although we had enough money for a field, but not for the ground under it, the TDSB had a lot of fields, but no funding to repair the surface amenities. And so the logic of this proposal just fell together.
Okay, so the most important thing, by the way, on that timeline, I would say, was the introduction of Principal Greece and the parents. They, Liz, John, you guys are here tonight. We know that we wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for you guys. So somewhere around the middle there, we met you, and things have been moving forward since then. So thank you again. Okay, so this is mostly, I think, for you guys, because a lot of the Scottish, and when we say Scottish, we mean the rugby club, know this. But I need to talk a little bit about the history of this particular school and our rugby club, because it really had to be this school for us. I know that we looked at basically every high school in the TDSB district, but I think we always knew it was going to be Lawrence Park. And it starts with the fact that about 15% of our entire membership is an alumni of this school, which is an outstanding stat. Mr. Swale Senior ran a survey for us with Will's help a few years ago, and we actually couldn't believe it. It's like sending your kid to piano lessons or any other kind of extracurricular, and one in every 15 kid went to the same school. So that is the story of our, call it, 500-plus alumni. I do want to speak about Cease Moody, but I'm not going to steal the thunder of a few people here tonight. But what I think is really remarkable is that Cease Moody led LPCI to, what does it say? 30? 32 city championships. He was a teacher here for a very long time. I think he's the coach of many people who are standing here today, and his legacy is very important to us. And so I think we will be speaking a little bit on Cease tonight, but I wanted to preview that. And Jez Lane, who is the most decorated Canadian rugby player in Canada, she also was the highest point-scoring rugby player on the seventh circuit in the world. She's a graduate of LPCI, year 2011. And I think she actually sent a video in. So maybe we can play that.
Hey, everybody. Jezlan Landry here. I'm so sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I am wanting to share this video as a message of full support for the bid for the Toronto Scottish to be at Lawrence Park. I learned to play rugby on that rugby field, and it led me to the Olympic podium. And not just from a performance perspective, but from a community and a friendship perspective. I have friends from over 20 years ago that I met at the Toronto Scottish. And to support this bid is not just to support the rugby club, it's to support the community and the people involved. And I hope you see tonight the type of people involved in this club are amazing. Some of my closest friends to this day, and I would love to see the community and the rugby community continue, and for Toronto Scottish to work with Lawrence Park. Two communities from my past that 100% had a big impact on my career and my life. So all the best tonight, supporting the Toronto Scottish all the way.
Nice message from Jez. And I'm sure on the day we open the field, Jez will be there. So she just couldn't make it tonight. It's a weeknight. Lawrence Park CI, very quickly, one of the things that we needed for our membership is subway access. So that's a big reason that we're here. In addition to our longstanding history with the school, we also needed a school that had some spillover space so that our juniors could play alongside us. And with the combination of the Baseball Diamond and Glenview nearby, there's enough green patches that we can all come together on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that's really the dream that we're going for here. Oh, yeah. And just one more shout out to our parent volunteers. Just to give you guys an idea of how long we've been working at this, this is from July 2022. We're now in September 24. We've been researching types of turf, going to Crescent, seeing what, you know, millions of dollars can buy. We don't have millions of dollars. We're only contributing 1.5. But we're going to do our best to bring a comparable field here to this public school.
It's possible to talk, even though we're still in the latter part of negotiations of a complete licensing deal, it's possible to talk about terms because they're actually built into the proposal the school board accepted so that we could start negotiations. So it's possible to talk about these. They're semi-public. We've settled really big things like the cost, the term, the division of user access. The school has it all the time that the school could possibly use it. The community has it about two-thirds of the remainder time that's rentable, and the Toronto Scottish are occupying it about a third of the total time rentable. And the final point is probably the most interesting one, because we're trying to keep this short, but this is, this is a point that only occurred to us as we started talking about this. The TDSB has worked really strenuously to find a way to accept a proposal like ours and maybe use it as a precedent for other schools, other groups. And it's, and it's been really difficult. But you discover another difficulty once you get into it. Schools only get to use their sports amenities a fraction of the time relative to the communities around them, who use them in fact more of the time. So the old field was getting worn out at times of day, times of year, and the school board wasn't using it. But the watering, lining, mowing, you know, weeding, everything that had to happen to keep that field going was a cost to the school. The same goes for pools. The same goes for this auditorium. These things are all available to the community, and they're very important. And our offer is maybe a precedent-setting form of community financing of a school amenity that takes some pressure off the board and enhances the experience of the students. So almost by accident, I think we've found something that's more beneficial than we intended, and hopefully happens more across the system. So the benefits of the club, I don't even have to look at this. We have access to the field at all the times we need it, plus an ability to accommodate our youth feeder programs like turf and city. We have a home field to play our games on Saturdays for the period of our season. And it's, it's just so much more accessible than trying to get north of Markham, especially at rush hour when we're trying to get to training times for juniors. Yeah. And the benefits of the school, currently that field, as harmless as it looks, is kind of dangerous. I was just talking to our great supporters from the Parents Council, and they were reminding me that students are actually hurting ankles, and there are divots, there's debris. Depends on the time of year. It could be a swamp. It can be frozen. It could be dry. The school's going to have almost a 12-month-a-year international rugby caliber field, safe, level, drains, durable, very low maintenance. It's going to be what, what, it's going to be the envy of other schools. The benefit to the community, as I was saying, communities use sports fields and school grounds frankly more than schools. If you total up all the time year-round, 24 hours a day, it's, it's actually a community asset. And the community has been very helpful to us in moving this deal forward with TDSB. They really value, actually the biggest source of green space in the city, more than city parks. TDSB has hundreds of schools, each of them with grounds and most of them with fields. It's really, really an important asset.
We all benefit from a new field here. And this business model has never been done before, but if we can make it work, I think it'll be repeated not only across the TDSB, but probably in other school boards too, because it's a triple win, and that's pretty rare. And with that, I think we'll go to Q and A. So we're going to have Doug moderate Q and A in terms of enforcing. So this, this is how we'll do it, as I mentioned at the start. It'll be more of a conversation. But we would really love it if especially the graduates or anyone who has a history at the school can tell us a little bit about that. Not everyone really knows how closely we're linked with LP. So would love for you to preface any questions or comments that you have with that. But we're going to keep it to two minutes per person, so we can get out of here in about 30 minutes.
I actually had Chris Ormsby practice this method. He, what I'd like him to demonstrate is how you explain your connection to the club, explain your connection to the school, and ask a question of general interest. So that one of the really smart people here, like Carolina or Jerry, we have folks from the Parents Council, we have the principal here, somebody will be able to answer the question about the deal. Okay?
We've got a microphone in the audience, microphone runner?
Yeah, give it. I looked into the scoreboard question. I'm so glad you asked. The question was, what is the provenance of the new scoreboard? And who, who is the field currently named after? And the field is named after Yak Parne. Yak Parne was a football coach here, and some of his former players raised some money to put up the scoreboard. Yak Parne had a storied athletic career. He was for a number of years goalie for McMaster University and for the Weston Rogues or something in an old industrial league. We don't know much more than that. But that new, that new scoreboard is 15 years old. That's how long you've been out of it. We don't know more than that. We don't know if there's an obligation to keep that name. We would love somewhere to acknowledge that this is the home of TSRFC. Anyone else have a question or comment for us? Thank you, Peter. This would probably be a good time to ask. We have representatives from the Parents Council. Liz Hansen and John Hedema have both been working with the Parents Council so long their children aren't here anymore. And they could probably give us a sense of what the reaction would be if the field were renamed, or whether or not there's a longstanding attachment to Yak Parne. Would either of you like to venture an opinion about that? Is, well, you can tell me, were you aware of Yak Parne? Yes. The question is, will this new field cater to post-match socializing?
Jerry would love to address that. I think the best way to describe the response to that is that because the field is a TDSB property, there are regulations in terms of what can and cannot go on on the property. That has been made very clear in the licensing agreement that we have been negotiating with the TDSB. So I think if the question is socialization without alcohol, the answer is yes. But the TDSB is very clear, and have been very clear throughout the piece, that alcohol and/or marijuana, for instance, would not be permitted on, on, on any TDSB grounds. So we respect that. I think the alternative is the fact that we have what has in many ways been our clubhouse for a long time, otherwise known as the Duke of Kent at, at Young and Eglinton. We not only have a longstanding relationship with the Duke of Kent, but most of the people here will also know that the upper room in the Duke of Kent has a lot of memorabilia of our club, and in fact, has been the location for a number of events that we hold throughout the year, social events. So I think we need to understand what the rules are according to the TDSB, respect those rules, and party where we've always partied, which is the Duke of Kent.
I would add that the evolving agreement has other items that affect our conduct, like picking up our garbage after for the next users of the field. In general, the club is pretty disciplined about this at Sunnybrook and has been at Fletcher's. Yeah, the scoreboard's not the only place to acknowledge, you know, builders of the school. Other questions? Yes. Heather Hunt. So the question is, is there currently a girls' team, a rugby team at Lawrence Park? And Johnny has the answer. Johnny is keeping his identity secret, but we won't permit that from anyone else. Future questions, please tell us. Other questions? Great. The question is, are there any provisions in place for people who can't afford membership registration? Jerry can also address that.
For my sins, I'm also the treasurer of the club. So I can tell you that one of the longstanding traditions of the Toronto Scottish has been to not only try to support junior rugby, but also to assist people who are having issues meeting the fee schedule that we, that in terms of what it costs for us to actually run the club. What has been the tendency, what has been the norm over the last several years is our Alumni Association, whom I, I work with our current director, Marty, who the alumni have set up, have their own independent fund, which is used primarily to either support certain activities like buses going up to Fletcher's or going to other places where a number of alumni may wish to attend, but also they are, they have set up a program whereby if players are having a hard time meeting their financial commitments in terms of paying their dues, that they will advance the dues to those players and either work out some form of payment arrangement with them over the course of a year, or that amount will be forgiven based on an understanding of the fact that we do have a number of players who are in university, who are not working full-time, and therefore may have a hard time coming up with their dues. We really want to encourage people to come out and play. That's our focus. I hope that answers your question.
I just want to, I just want to round out the scholarship, the scholarship question. Can we pull up the presentation again? We actually, Kiki, who really wanted to be here today, sent in a video too, and I promised her I'd show it. So Kiki, Kiki was one of our very high-performing players. She did come out of the turf program. She's currently studying at UBC, and she's been very strongly supported by our club.
Hello, my name is Kiki Doe, and I'm a member of the Toronto Scottish. I just wanted to get on here to quickly share how the Scottish have helped me in my rugby journey and have allowed me to be the player I am today. Having toured with the U20 Canada team, UBC, and also the U18 Commonwealth Games team, where we won silver, in which the Scottish provided me with quite a bit of money to attend, has really helped me grow into the player I am today and see my true potential, which is why I believe that a permanent home can really create those same opportunities for future players and create that sense of family and belonging that I already feel, even more evident within this team.
So not specifically talking about the alumni program, but other-ish, other financial support that the club is providing. There are two other factors that I, that I failed to mention because I was talking specifically about the alumni focus. But the Board of Directors has over the, over a number of years, but more particularly since the sale of Fletcher's Fields and when we have more financial resources available to us, have been taking into consideration the needs of people like Kiki who are playing high-performance rugby and have been providing financial financial support for them to, in Kiki's case, and one other member of our club, attending the, the national, the women's national competition out in Halifax this year. And in Kiki's case also, because there is a pay to play regime, because Rugby Canada doesn't have enough money to run all of these programs at no cost. There was a, for Kiki to attend the, the tryouts for the Rugby Canada Women's Junior Program, if you will, age-related program. We also made a financial contribution to allow Kiki to attend that. Aside from that, there is also to the credit of our, initially our Burns Committee. And for those of you who don't know, there is a Robbie Burns Supper every year, which is not only a celebration of Scottish heritage, but also a fundraiser for this club and has been contributing to the financial stability of the club for a long time. But in 2015, the, the chair and the outgoing committee decided that they had the ability to donate $50,000 as a, an initial contribution to a fund, which was set up with the Canadian Rugby Foundation. And that fund is specifically established to support, to provide financial support to players who, who, who have financial needs to, again, support the ability to play. I can, I can report to you very happily that that fund through a combination of continuing donations from members of our rugby community, some of which are on a monthly basis, and the reinvestment of funds, the, the investment earnings and a contribution, a matching contribution from the CRF, because they do match on a 25% basis, any, any fund up to the fund hitting $100,000. So we've raised eight and gotten investment income of over $80,000 now. And with the addition of the CRF contribution, that fund is now over $100,000.
So the question is, when is this field going to be ready? I, I'm happy to answer. The field can, it's actually only about a three-month build. We've looked at other field projects. Some schools have managed to do it in the summer when they're closed anyway. But with TDSB, we first have to finalize an agreement. Then there's a design and planning element. Then they have to do contracting and the work back schedule winds up being a, a long time. We are seeking fall, yeah, fall 2025 groundbreaking and completion in time for a 26 season. In, in, you know, in a perfect world, it could happen sooner, but that's what we're going for.
And we're asking the TDSB to make commitments.
Yeah, and they're trying, they're trying. It's, you know, it, that's a massive organization and, and it's, when it tries to expedite something, you can hear the groans coming from, you know, out the window. It's, it's, they're just not very agile. And this project is actually relatively small compared to the other things that are happening, some of which are happening to this school. And it's also very unique. They've, no, seriously, this is, this is kind of a precedent sending project. Dawn? The, the question at home is, what are we doing in the interval while waiting for TDSB to complete construction of the field? Thank you. And you, and you can see why it's so important to get a certain date. The logistics of moving the various teams around, just transportation, equipment and bookings are really strenuous. Okay, next question. I can't see who it is. Eddie? That young man was once my coach. That's a great question. I'll let Jerry repeat it because it's been involved, but the answer's delicate.
So let me, let me repeat the question and Ed, if I miss any part of it, please let me know. I believe the question was, aside from just the field, are there considerations for things like lighting of the field? Are there considerations like, might there be a long-term plan for a bubble to be installed over the field? I think, are you also asking about other things like change rooms and washrooms, Ed? Oh, just the basics. Most people might include washrooms and change rooms in the basics, but okay. Speaking more directly to Ed's question, there is, I will first answer about the bubble or a bubble. And the answer to that is that that would be prohibitively expensive. We did as a committee, look at the potential cost of putting up a bubble. And while there have been bubbles put over other school fields, those have been done on the basis of a very different arrangement than the arrangement that we're making with the TDSB. They have been done on a profit-making basis. And we have been very clear with the TDSB from the start that we're not in the business of trying to make money. We're in the business of getting people to play rugby. So we've agreed with the TDSB in our negotiations that we are not looking towards putting a dome over the field. That's something that the TDSB in their wisdom may at some point decide that they need to do, but it won't be part of our, our transaction or our licensing agreement. The other point which you raised, Ed, which is, has been a point of discussion between the Toronto Scottish and, and the school board, is the installation of lighting. And we have been strongly in favor, and we've done some, to the credit of Carolina in particular, there's been work done to research what the cost of installation and maintenance of lighting on the field would be and how it might, and even how it might be arranged. And there, I would say there is broad support, not only within the Toronto Scottish, but I, I think I can say the feedback we've received from the school and, and that part, the people who would actually be using the facility, there's strong support for that on the following basis. Not only would it be beneficial to the Toronto Scottish, but it would be hugely beneficial to the TDSB and the school itself in terms of extending the timeframe during which the, the field can be used, particularly in the spring and the fall. We've done our best to put in front of the TDSB, the, if you will, the larger package, where our focus has been on the field itself. But we have had discussions and, and in fact, Liz and John can speak to this. The, the Parents Association have also had discussions about what I will call the ancillary and what some people would consider the necessary additions to just building a field. I hope that answers your question, Ed.
Yeah, that's great. The question is whether or not this is just about a field or whether or not there'll be other amenities, specifically a running track around the field for kids who aren't playing rugby. And there are two answers to that. One is we need to secure the field. And when all the details of that are known, its dimensions, its location, its design, then, then the school can contemplate with other parties like the, the Parents Council, what can go around it. But we're keeping the issue separate for now because it, it's enough just to get the, the, the field through this negotiation period and finalize this agreement. The other answer is the field is going to be useful for many, many other things. It's going to be lined and it will be sufficiently large for other sports like football and soccer. So it's going to get all kinds of use from all kinds of students for all kinds of other things when not used for, for rugby. I don't, I don't think that's, that's not a risk. Well, Carolina is our expert on field dimensions, but there is enough room around whatever size we're building for whatever sport we're building for a track. It's just where it is and who's paying for it and what the cost will be and how long it takes. It can happen after the field is planned.
So yeah, thank you for the question. So, so just having kind of over or participate in, not even participate, just observing the negotiations that have been going on. So a couple of things, the actual field will have, so it's a rugby pitch, which is larger, slightly larger than a football field and a soccer field. And, but the lines for the other sports are going to be drawn in as well, so that it can be used for, for other sports, obviously. So that's one plus. The other thing is, so these things are still being negotiated. So this is early, still early goings in terms of the specifics. I know that they will be, at a minimum, it will be penciled in a track. And if the negotiations conclude where, where a track is not incorporated, then the board will be looking at, you know, what are alternatives then? And another facet of that might be, might entail some fundraising. So it's still, the question is valid, but a touch early. And as we continue going through this process of having the, of Scottish rugby, having these conversations with the TDSB, then that's when we'll have a little more certainty and understanding around the track specifically. Okay. Just the side note on Havergill, so they, they don't actually have a right to use our track. They're using it by permit and, and so field use during the school day is exclusive to Lawrence Park Collegiate. So, and, and that's a, is that, is that good? For, for an answer so far? Okay. So, so I guess stay tuned and, and obviously we're going to hear more things with the hopes of a shovel in ground September 25th. So, okay.
Just to add one further point in response to that particular question about the track. We'd like, the, the committee would like everyone here and the TDSB to think about the field as being an anchor to this project, that we felt it was very important, not only for our rugby community, but for LPCI and for this community, that that field get renovated. But we're not trying to limit that. At the same time, the Toronto Scottish don't have unlimited funds, not unlike the TDSB. And, and therefore our commitment was related to the field itself. We are hoping that in fact, there will be a, if you will, an expanded project, but not looking for more money from the Toronto Scottish to fund the other portions of the project. So to the gentleman who asked the question, if your kids are going here, you probably are going to end up getting involved in the Parents Council and I'm sure they would welcome your participation.
We'll just, we'll just repeat for Zoom. So the question is, how are we integrating the school? And tell us a bit about yourself.
I think enough people hear about that all the time. Great question. I really liked that one because I think I'm a prime example of how the club has done that and can, can, can continue to do that. So just to give you a little bit of background on myself, first off, my name is Brandon Kostick. I graduated from Lawrence 2014, if my head is correct. But I didn't know what rugby was walking through these halls and when I was in grade nine and eventually, you know, found my way onto the field. But found myself with the Scottish through the lovely support of a number of gentlemen that are in this, in this crowd right now. You know, Mark, Dan, Craig, Swales, a number of these gentlemen were coaching at Lawrence Park in the mornings. I remember that my first day of rugby practice, I walked down in the bleachers and who did I see? But one of the biggest guys I've ever played rugby with, Craig, sitting right there and had a 15-minute conversation about what I was doing after school, right? So just that piece of being integrated within the coaching, but also having that presence, I think, within the school of just that word of mouth goes a long way. For myself specifically, what rugby's kind of brought to me, I was that grade 12 that came from, my parents were teachers, they were divorced, single income family. I didn't have the benefits of a lot of the kids in the area to go to a cottage or go to summer camp. What was I during, during the summers? I was riding my bike around, you know, in parks, maybe getting up to some mischief. But it took me, took me, you know, into an organized program for a low cost, where I met incredible people that have been my future employers, you know, guidance, so-called guidance counselors, if you will. But going into my grade 12 year, I remember I, I excelled at rugby and I didn't know if I was going to go to university or not. And one of the biggest things that pushed me there was that I was an athlete and that I could continue rugby at a university level. So from just that piece, going to university, you know, I was able to go for four years and get a diploma. But if I didn't have rugby in my life, I don't think I would have actually gone to university. So I think that's something that I want to bring a big highlight to within the, within the school, within the community, within the partnership that is the Toronto Scottish with the group, is that if you can affect just one other kid and have them, you know, meet the potential that they didn't know they maybe had, I think you've done an incredible service and I think that'll help, happen many, many, many times. So I'm a prime example of that. I know there's other kids that are coming through the Scottish now, that hopefully we have the same impact on. But, you know, as I, as I stand here 15 years later, I have ex-employers in, in the, in the crowd, my accountants in the crowd. I have real estate connections in the crowd. I'm familiar with the president chief or ex-president chief of the Globe and Mail. These are things that I would have never had, you know, not being a part of the school. So I think that's how the Scottish will affect that broader, that broader group.
One other, one other part to that question was, yeah, there you go, Michaela. I think you're better to answer that.
Hi, I'm Michaela. I'm, I play for the Scottish as well. So I actually went to Leeside where we have a huge rugby program. My dad, El Charlotte, is the rugby coach there. And I'm on co-op this year, so I've actually come back to help coach Leeside. And I'm also coaching Toronto City Amazons Girls Rugby. So I'm really trying to bridge that gap between club and high school rugby as well as university. I also play at the University of British Columbia. So I'm especially trying to inspire girls that it's more than just high school. You can expand into club and university. And at Leeside right now, we have at least 40 girls in our program, which is actually, I think more than the guys, which is really fun. But yeah, so I think a lot of us, I know Liv, she also helped coach Amazons. She's at TMU helping right now. Yeah. And North Toronto. So we have a lot of us, member, current members who, and past members, who do help coach in the community at clubs, lower level clubs and high schools as well.
Excellent answer.
All right. The last question, it's not really the last question. We'll be around and you can grab us anytime, anywhere. But for this group, who wants to ask the last question? And it's got to be really, oh, look at. So the question is, will there be junior programs available? I'm presuming you're asking about on the field for a child the age of your daughter.
Is there anyone here that specifically wants to talk about city or turf? No? Okay, so I'll take the question. So we have a carve-out in our proposal. Wednesday evenings will be for city and turf to run the programs as well as Saturday mornings. So there's always going to be a presence of youth rugby here as part of our field deal when we get it. Does that, does that answer the question? Yeah. City and turf, they're incredible programs. You can look them up online. It's, I think they start at like five years old into the programming. So with that, we're going to close out this presentation. We're going to take a photo, so I'm going to ask you guys all to come to the front. We appreciate you being here so much. I honestly can't, can't express it enough. If you're sitting here thinking all I did was show up and sit in a chair. If you're sitting here thinking all I did was show up and sit in a chair, it meant a lot. And we want to capture this sort of historic start of our next home chapter. So let's come to the front. We'll take a photo, and we're only half an hour behind schedule, so perfect.